Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's good to see everybody out tonight. It is National Night Out, and you are out, so welcome. So it's a pleasure to see everybody, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see everybody up here, too. So I'd like to remind everybody to please silence or turn off all electronic devices, including us up here. We're always the worst offenders. So Mr. Chambers is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. If everybody would please rise.
Dear God, we humbly come before you tonight mindful of our many blessings. We thank you for our families, our friends, and our wonderful community of Temple Terrace. We thank you that we live in a country where we govern ourselves in freedom. We pray for those who are sick or in distress during these times. We ask you to open our hearts and our minds tonight as we engage in the noble work of public service. Help us advance the common good of all your people by making our city even more amazing for future generations. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening again, everybody. The first item on the agenda is always a pleasure. We always start out with the best stuff right up front. So we have an award to pass on to one of our colleagues tonight, Vice Mayor Donahue. It is Florida League of Cities Home Rule Hero Award. We seem to have done this quite a few times here. So I'll explain. The Florida League of Cities recently recognized more than 100 municipal officials with a Home Rule Hero Awards for their work during the 2020 legislative session. These local leaders worked tirelessly throughout the 2020 legislative session to promote local voices making local choices, protect home rule powers of Florida municipalities, and advance the Florida League of Cities legislative agenda. Home Rule was adopted by the people of Florida as a constitutional revision in 1968. The most precious power a city in Florida has is its home rule. The ability to establish its form of government through its charter and then to enact ordinances, codes, plans, and resolutions without prior state approval and minimal interference is a tremendous authority. It is the ability for a city to address local problems through and by local decision-makers. The Home Rule Hero Award recipients are local government officials, as Vice Mayor Donahue, both elected and non-elected, who consistently responded to the league's request to reach out to members of the state legislature to provide a local perspective on an issue and to preserve our home rule power. Vice Mayor Donahue received the Home Rule Hero Award for her efforts in contacting our legislators and speaking out in support of legislation that infringes on home rule. Speaking out in support of legis-- I think that's wrong. You denounce legis-- you reject, yes, yeah. Protect our home rule. Right, so very well, somewhere floating around here, there's an award. Right? Do I have it? No, no, it's...
We'll see if we can get the normal ones.
Okay. I have... Oh, there it is. Very good. So we're supposed to come down there, I would assume? Would you join me down near the...
Sure, I'll meet you down there.
Thank you.
My grandchildren were disappointed. They thought it was a home run.
So I'm not sure what's in here. I think that's a peanut, seems like.
Ooh, it's a peanut. Yeah.
And here is your certificate.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Oh, we need to be in the center. You have to scoot your...
Sorry.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from our previous meeting on September 15th.
Second.
Is there a motion in the second, or is there any discussion or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays, the minutes are approved. Next, we'll hear from people wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit imposed on all comments from the public. Speakers who wish to address the council or should come to the podium and please state your name and city of residence first. During public comment on items not on the agenda, rest assured that there are directors in the gallery here as well as the city manager, and all of your comments are taken seriously and are followed up upon. So do we have any requests or anybody? I don't have any up here yet. Is there anybody who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? You guys are making this easy on me tonight. Thank you. Next item is a municipal code enforcement board lien reduction petition concerning property located at 109 South Glen Arvin Avenue. Code Board Chair David Pogorlidge will explain. Welcome, Mr. Pogorlidge.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. While I'm getting my notes out, I did want to share a bit of sombering news with you all. Just heard on the way in that rock and roll legend Eddie Van Halen passed away.
Wow.
It's a sad day. So tonight's lien reduction is for case number 19-6805. Advocate's name is William E. Curtis, Jr. The circumstances surrounding this lien reduction really just generate around some medical issues that the family had, and once those medical issues were resolved, they also resolved the code violation. This particular violation came before us. It was voted unanimously to reduce the fine from $680 down to $60 pending payment on the fine within 30 days, as per usual. It is our recommendation and that recommendation of the co-directors that you accept the lien reduction from $680 to $60.
Very well, thank you.
Stand for questions.
Very good. Is a property owner or petitioner here to speak on this?
I don't see them.
City manager, city attorney, any input on this item? No. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If not, are there questions from the dais for Mr. Pogorlidge? See no questions? If the lien reduction is appropriate, I'll call for motion to approve the lien reduction in case number 19-6805, City versus William E. Curtis, Jr., for the property located at 109 South Glen Arvin Avenue.
I move to approve the reduction.
Just a point of order, Vice Mayor. Would you want to add language concerning the payment within 30 days?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Expect payment within 30 days or it will be considered non-senjoyed.
And resorts back to...
Yes, resort back to the 600 and plus.
Okay, we have a motion.
That's good with my second.
And we have a second. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? I assume somebody will fill the petitioner in as to how this works.
The respondents were made aware of the meeting tonight, and they were made aware of the procedure that they had 30 days from tonight.
Okay.
If it passed us, and I'm sure the city clerk will reach out to respond. I'll let him know.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt 2020 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update. Open the public hearing. Mr. Diego Guerra from the Hillsborough County Planning Commission will explain. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, planning commission staff. This item is the planning commission's review and adoption recommendation of the annual update to the Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects. This is a routine annual update that is required by Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. The review is conducted in accordance with Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, which requires the schedule of projects be updated on an annual basis. This update will replace the existing schedule found in the Capital Improvement Section Comprehensive Plan with the schedule found in your packets. This update is accomplished by ordinance per Chapter 163 and does not take the typical plan amendment process. Additionally, plans of other agencies are adopted by reference into the schedule through an existing policy in the Capital Improvement Section. City and planning commission staff worked together to identify projects from the capital improvements program that affected adopted levels of service. City staff identified whether those projects eliminate a deficiency, maintain levels of service, or serve for future growth. City staff also requested the list of the 10-year transportation projects be incorporated as part of the schedule of projects. For those portions that were city projects within the first five years and specifically affecting levels of service, those projects were included in the analysis. Depicted on the slide is a summary of schedule of projects by program area. As you can see, there are six program areas which were identified and consist of a total of 86 projects. The total FY '21 through FY '25 funding amount is approximately $20.22 million. In terms of level of service priorities, the majority of the project funding is for repair, replace, and renovation to maintain the levels of service. The remainder of funding is intended to eliminate deficiencies and for future growth. Planning commission staff examined the schedule with respect to the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. A few of these policies are identified on the slide, however, a full list is available in your packets. First, the schedule is consistent with the direction for a level of service priorities, which states that they should be for repair or replacement of facilities, to eliminate deficiencies, and plan for future growth. Secondly, the schedule is consistent with the funding criteria identified in the comprehensive plan, both in terms of revenue fund and timing. Additionally, the scheduled projects further several infrastructure sub-elements, including providing quality infrastructure and services to residents and enhancing transportation At its 14th September regular meeting, the planning commission found the schedule of projects consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and recommends city council adopt the FY '21 through FY '25 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects by ordinance. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. Myself and city staff are available for questions.
Good, thank you, Mr. Guerra. Are there members of the public who wish to address this item? Seeing none, council members? Are there questions to Mr. Guerra? No questions? Okay. We will close the public hearing then and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the Capital Improvement Section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 through fiscal year 2024 through 2025 and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for the 2021 through 2030 into the schedule of projects, adopting by reference per the Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 1.5.13 Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transits Development Plan, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve, second.
Motion, the second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guerra, for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving SPR 20-07 Final Site Plan. Senior Planner Gus Carpus will explain. Welcome, Mr. Carpus. Yes? Please do.
If we can get on the record that this ordinance will appear October 20th for a second reading.
Thank you. Good catch. Thank you, yes. The ordinance is approved and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, October 20th. Thank you. Mr. Carpus, sorry about that.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council member. What we have before you tonight is a site plan, final site plan for Salem Fresh Eats Restaurant. The owner of the property is the old Kmart building, which is 5400 Bush Boulevard LLC. The applicant is J.D. Elsabower of Sycamore Engineering Incorporated. He is here tonight. Okay. The location of the property in the general area map there is 5308 Bush Boulevard, which is located north of Bush Boulevard and east of Overlook Drive. Again, the proposed use is to construct a 2,470 square-foot drive-through restaurant, and the proposed acres in the site plan is going to be .61. So in the site plan here, you see the drive-through is on the east side. The property itself has its own dedicated access on the south side. East of the development, there is a curb cut that serves the Tampa Mall. The subject property has an easement agreement that allows them to use the curb cut on the Tampa Mall for their drive-through on the east side of the building. Both these properties, the proposed site plan and the Tampa Mall, will comply with the parking requirements per the LDC. Here we have the elevations. Here's the east elevation with the drive-through. This side faces the parking lot of the Tampa Mall. This is the west building elevation. This faces the Dunkin' Donuts that's currently existing. And then we have north and south elevations. The north elevation faces the Tampa Mall, and the south will face Bush Boulevard. The overall height of this structure would be 26 feet 8 inches. The staff recommends council approve the resolution for the final site plan, subject to any condition that the council feels is necessary. Again, the applicant is here. I stand for any questions that you may have.
Good. Does the applicant wish to provide any comments? Welcome, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. J.D. Elsabower, Sycamore Engineering, 8370 West Hillsborough Avenue, Suite 205, Tampa, Florida 33615. I am the engineer of record and also the agent. I have with me Kyle Jensen. He is a land use attorney and representative of the owner also for any question. I think Mr. Casper had indicated clearly the request, what we're looking for, so we are already here to answer any question if you have.
Very good. Thank you. Prior to any questions, are there members of the public who wish to address this item? Seeing none, council members? Do we have questions for the applicant or for staff? This is Vice Mayor Donahue.
My question is, there's a new walk path with a light that's just been installed. Did you already know that was going to be there? I mean, is that going to affect your pattern at all? You know what I'm talking about? There's a pedestrian walkway with a signal that's just been installed on Bush Boulevard there.
Right. I think the best of my ability, I understand your question. We take care of the pedestrian part exclusively. As you notice, the building is very close to the street, and so the sidewalk is connected directly to the building, and the same way continuing all the way to the Dunkin' Donut on the west side. And of course, if you continue further to the bank.
So that won't affect you, your pattern at all? That won't, that new light structure will not affect your driving pattern?
No, will not affect. Okay, so we do have two axes to the Bush Boulevard, and the two axes will be on the two sides of the site. So the two axes will stay the same, and they're going to serve us and, of course, serve in the existing retail in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Welcome.
Other questions for the applicant or staff? I do have a question for Mr. Carpus. I'm assuming the answer to this is yes, or we wouldn't be hearing this, but there's enough parking spaces left at the Tampa Mall property and Publix and all, every, all the minimum parking requirements are...
Correct. The Publix is a separate piece of property totally. So what we took is the Tampa Mall property itself, and then we took out what the applicant is proposing and what they needed, and encountered the remaining spaces that would be required, and they are over still.
They're still plenty.
Yeah, the properties individually have the required parking for each of their uses.
Okay. And the second question is, this, I'm a little confused. This is the same owner?
Correct.
So this isn't, they didn't sell one little piece of the parking lot?
No, no, see.
It's all the same owner?
So it's kind of like the downtown where the Paragon property is. They're currently going to be doing a land lease with the Paragon property. Now, what J.D. is going to be doing, he's actually coming in with a plat in the next month or two that's actually going to plant this piece of property off, but it's still going to be owned by the Tampa Mall property owner, but in case they want to convey it in the future, they could.
I got it.
But they're doing the site plan first, and then they're plating it in, I believe, November.
Okay. Very good. Other questions?
No questions.
Yes, Mr. Chura.
Thank you for your explanation. I do have a question. On your general area map, it doesn't really show where this project is going to sit on the parcel. It just shows a little dot in the middle, and then it shows my site plan, but I'm more interested in where the existing driveway is, how traffic's going to flow, are the other parcels going to sell and create, you know, other challenges? I'd like to know a little bit more if possible.
Okay, if I can go... Can I go back? Okay, so if you see, if you see right to the west of this site plan here where it says Overlook Drive, that's actually Dunkin' Donuts site right there. So Overlook Drive is on the other side of the Dunkin' Donuts. So that piece of property is right adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts. So you're going to have two little cutouts. So that little cutout to the west, southwest of that general area map is the Dunkin' Donuts. They're going to be directly east of that. So they're going to have a similar square right there.
How does that fall with the existing driveway that's off Bush Boulevard?
Okay, so one of the driveways, as you can see, is already on their piece of property. So they're not creating a new driveway. That's going to be on their platted land. And then the one to the east is still for the mall. That's existing. But that's why they needed the easement to access over that driveway to use their property for the drive-through. So there's no new driveway created. They could not get anything from FDOT that would allow them to put another curb cut along Bush Boulevard.
So is there existing one driveway or two driveways on the Bush?
There's two existing driveways. One is on the site that they're proposing, and then one is off the site that they got an easement from the Tampa Mall to use.
Respect it, counselor. I think it's a very good point you brought it up. So we are really located between the two existing axes to that shopping center. So the building is, those two axes is existing. We re-strive them and, you know, change the radius. So that's the concept here. Now, the property line for that partial is, which we're assuming would later plat it, if you look kindly to the yellow or just dash line, we included all the way to the edge, to the western edge of the parking spaces. So that's property line. Therefore, when Mr. Carpus indicated that those, that axis located within our partial, that's what he mean. But still, those two axes is really located on the two sides of the proposed building and plus still serving the whole shopping center. So there is no change in the direction of the flow. There is no change in the, you know, accessibility at all. So we are utilizing those parking between those two axes for the proposed use there.
I understand, and it just would have been much more helpful to have this particular layout on the actual footprint of the entire property, because what I'm looking at is your drive-through, and if you put eight cars in that drive-through lane, you're in the middle of traffic.
Right.
So that's what I'm looking at, and it would have been much more helpful if we would have had the whole parcel and then your little piece cut out of it. So it's sort of, I understand it, but it can be deceiving for the folks that don't because you conveniently have one, two, three, four, five cars. Two more cars in that line, you'd be in the middle of traffic.
Absolutely correct, and I agree with you.
So how do you, how do you propose to avoid that situation coming forward?
At five, I'm sorry.
If the, if the drive-through is backed up?
Okay.
How do you avoid cars from being in the middle of the lane that's going into Bush Boulevard?
Okay, so first of all, we have, as you notice here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, easily eight or nine car. Okay, usually typically, we'd talk about 180 linear foot of a drive-through. Usually typically, you have less than that distance, plus we have a bypass lane, which is the bypass lane, that's what's important about bypass lane, because people get impatient, so they leave. So we have those two. If you get to reality, we have 180 feet long, plus 180 feet long the bypass, so that's double. The chance to have that long on the drive-through, I think, extremely slim. Therefore, you know, we, you know, we went that, we create that curve, as you see, to create much more a queue to the, to the, to the drive-through.
I understand what you're telling me, but I'm also looking at safety. Have you been to Chick-fil-A during any time of the day?
I agree 100% on Chick-fil-A.
That's my point. So 180 feet means nothing.
Okay.
It's a good problem to have if you have 10 cars in line.
Correct.
There's a backup, there's a problem. I'm looking at, and if this was in the middle of the parking lot heading towards the actual Tampa market?
Okay.
That's not an issue, but my concern is your backup will be in the middle of a heavily traveled lane that's dumping onto and off of Bush Boulevard. That's where my, you know, concerns are.
It's a very good concern, but I believe in the best of my ability, you have extensive queue to that. When, second, to answer respectfully to what you indicated, Chick-fil-A is a different story. I mean, I'm in the design business, and really Chick-fil-A is different from any other drive-through in that, you know, in that city, or even in the country. So that's, we agree about it. We're designing Chick-fil-A right now, and they wanted at least 25 car in the two lane. So much more because they knew the capacity. I designed this franchise or this type of restaurant, the same one for over 15 or 16 of them in the last 12, 13 years. I don't believe I have that long a drive-through. I mean, there is, we talk about Brandon, we talk about, you know, might be, you know, Hillsborough Avenue. So the best of my ability, I think, with a seven, eight car plus a drive-through would be enough for this type of restaurant.
If our staff is comfortable with it, then that'll be a burden they have to deal with down the road. Certainly, I, you know, I hope, it's a good problem to have if you have too many cars coming to your restaurant, but I've seen what other establishments have experienced, and it's more of a safety issue. If that driveway was backing up into the parking lot in the back or on the side, it wouldn't be as much of a concern, but it would back up onto the driveway that's dumping onto and off of Bush Boulevard. That's why I raised the question. If it was a back driveway, I wouldn't say too much about it.
Okay, didn't you bring up another kindly, another point? Okay, didn't you bring up another kindly, another point? We processing right now, the, what they call it, safety upgrade to the access from DOT. And DOT have requirement was 225-foot lengths from the menu to the, to the, to the road, which we achieve it. So, but of course, I'm talking, when I said 180, the length of the drive-through. However, to the right of way, we can achieve the 225. So approval of DOT, which mean approval also, they, they wanted to avoid any impact and back up to their right of way also. Because that's a major concern for them.
I hear you. I'm just expressing my concerns are and they're, they're visible in today's world, so that's why I bring them up. I, I support development. I think it's wonderful that establishments are coming to our city. But I also am tasked with looking at safety issues and that's my reason for my comments.
Oh, definitely concern, I'm not disagree with you. The other things I noticed it, I tell you something. When you have less parking than required and number, that may make a problem because people does not park, therefore they need to stay in the drive-through. And that's what's happened many times. However, we have 27 parking spaces on this year.
I, I understand. The reason I'm again bringing it up is you have a lot of attractions and a lot of reasons of people that new marketplace that's opened up there gets very busy on the weekends. Let's say at lunchtime, 15 people decide they're going to go in a drive-through, that can create a problem for you. You have a major, it's not like it's a standalone building by itself in the middle of nowhere. It's basically part of an out parcel where you have two major anchors, which is Publix and the, the market, whatever they're calling it now. So that's why I'm bringing these issues up. I know what the impacts can be. Hopefully, it won't be an issue, but it's a possibility that it can be. And that's why I just wanted to put on record. It's the responsibility of staff to be able to look at that and say, it's a valid point. Let's look at a, an alternate way to have this driveway bleed off into the parking lot and let's not make it into a major artery that's going onto Bush Boulevard. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
Understood.
Okay, you have two major anchors that are right there. And on a Saturday or a Friday when they're very busy, it's not unlikely that you'll get 10 people pull up in that parking lot to go to the drive-through. And one, one glitch with the computer, the food, whatever, it backs up. So that's why I bring it up. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, are there other questions of the petitioner or staff? Okay, thank you very much, sir. If not, is there a motion approving SPR 20-07?
You took for resolution SPR 20-07 final site plan.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there, is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is passed. Thank you, Mr. Corpus. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a resolution approving financial advisory services with Public Financial Management. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain. I was wondering where Lynn was because I didn't see her sitting there, but it said to read that and she would appear. So here she is.
Hi, Ms. Boswell. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. On July 31st, 2020, the city issued a request for proposal for financial advisory services since the current one had expired in May of 2020. In response to the city's advertisement, two firms submitted very, very strong proposals and they were PRM, our previous financial advisor, and PRAG, Public Resources Advisory Group. After calculating the score sheet and providing a sample revenue note, the cost analysis did show that PRM is recommended continue to be the city's financial advisory services. Just in brief, if I may, the scoring was very, they were the same, just about the same. The maximum points you could have was 100. One was simply 90, 90, the other one was 100. How that came to be is I did a sample. Let's say we want to borrow $15 million, how much is that going to cost?
We don't, by the way.
We don't, we don't, we have that. It was just a number that I had thrown out. And because their, their costs were just so similar, but PRM just barely inched it out just by about $1,000. We have a great relationship with PRM and I would love to see that continue. So that, my recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the proposed agreement with Public Financial Management, Inc. for provision of financial advisory services. I stand for questions.
Good, thank you, Ms. Boswell. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, do we have questions? Ms. Weissmer down here.
When did we write this contract last?
We wrote that it, I would say it ended in 2020. I believe it was 2016 or 17, right before I got here. I just knew that the contract had ended in 2020 for the term that the previous RFP was for.
Was the contract 36 months before?
It was.
Okay, that's my, that's my.
Yes.
Other questions for Ms. Boswell?
How much will we pay for this? How much will the fees be?
We don't pay anything until we actually get the loan like we've done before. We haven't.
So there'll be no, there's no, there's no retainage or anything at this point?
That is correct. If we want something more than a loan, we have, will have this financial advisory service if need be, but we have not since the time we did the last contract.
So there'll be nothing, there's no retain, no retain or anything that we have?
That is correct.
Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion approving the contract with financial advisor services if it's acceptable?
Due to approve the resolution approving the financial advisory services with PFM.
Second.
Motion in a second is due discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have my hand out.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Before it's approved, I just wanted to, in paragraph that's numbered one, there seems to be a typo there. City Council authorizes the approval, we shouldn't even say of the 36-month agreement or of a 36-month agreement. There's a typo in there, which right now, we would not be able to fix because we don't have ordinance allowing a court or city attorney to correct typos. We need to correct that typo in our motion.
So the cure is that the maker of the motion would need to include language to modify that section. Can you repeat the section again?
It is in the now there clause is numbered one.
Right.
City Council authorizes the approval of a 36-month agreement.
Okay, so I would ask Mr.
That's what it says.
There's no of.
Missing one of the of.
Of, of the of. Oh, it's missing, oh, okay.
So we need to amend your motion?
I'll amend the motion to include the correction of the verbiage in paragraph one to include the word of a 36-month agreement.
Thank you.
Good, do we have?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? I'll look better this time, see if I make sure. Okay, if not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Next item is a resolution approving the purchase of sanitation carts from Schaefer Systems International, Inc. and Public Works Operation and Maintenance Director Ray LeBlanc will explain. Stand by while we do a little house cleaning here and de-germ the podium. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Welcome, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution approving the purchase of 6,500 sanitation carts for the city's semi-automated residential trash collection program. The sanitation division of the Public Works Department is responsible for the important tasks of collecting and disposing of all solid waste generated in the city. The fiscal year 2020-21 budget includes funds for the purchase of 6,500 sanitation carts needed for the implementation of a semi-automated residential solid waste collection. After researching local bids awards and we obtained quotes from vendors, we have concluded the most cost-effective method is to purchase these carts through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract 041217-SFR. Budgeted funds for the total expenditure of $296,000. $75 have been allocated in Public Works Machinery and Equipment Fund, 480-204-1534-6499.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Ms. Tumbelson, I can't, is, you're wanted to speak on 8G or 8D? Is it 8G? Okay, okay, thank you. I couldn't make out whether it was a D or G. Any members of the public wish to comment? Seeing none, council members, are there questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the purchase of sanitation carts from Schaefer Systems International?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving an increase to family recreation complex annual membership fees. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfield will explain. Welcome, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I come to you to request a 5% increase in the annual membership rates for members of the family recreation complex. Back in 1995, the city expanded the family recreation complex and at that time implemented the membership program. As part of that membership program, it was built into the program to have a 10% increase in membership rates every two years. That was to cover increase in operational staffing, utility costs that the family complex would see over time. Due to economic conditions and the condition of the family complex, membership rates have not been adjusted since 2012. It is time that, that we look at that again. This was discussed in the, in the budget workshops over the summer. And a 5% increase in membership rates was proposed and discussed during that time to, again, to, to catch us up a little bit with, with the expenses that we incur in operating that facility. I stand for any questions that you all may have.
Good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there questions for Mr. Langfield?
Honorable.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome, sir.
Yes.
If you would just please state your name and city of residence, please.
My name is Radhika Wajah and I live in the city of Temple Terrace. I just wanted to ask, what's the annual fees for the recreation center? Thank you.
Thank you.
The easiest way, can we hand them to them or do I need to read them into the record?
If you could answer, there's people that hear the question, they might like to know the answer too.
There are multiple membership packages that, that we have for the family recreation complex. We'll start with the resident family membership. The current cost of that resident family membership is $290 per year and that is for a full year, not for a calendar year. The recommended new cost is $305. The non-resident family membership currently is $580. The recommended new cost is $610. A resident adult membership is $150, or excuse me, was $146. The proposed membership new cost is $150. The non-resident adult membership is currently $292. The recommended new cost is $300. A resident adult plus one membership currently is $225. The recommended new cost is $235. A non-resident adult plus one membership is $450. The recommended new cost is $470. A resident child or student membership is $117. The recommended new cost is $125. The non-resident child student membership is currently $232. The recommended new cost is $250. A resident senior membership is $70. The recommended new cost is $73. The non-resident senior membership is currently $140. The recommended new cost is $146. Those membership rates that I just run off include sales tax.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there questions for Mr. Langfield? Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, Carl, what is the anticipated increase in revenues in the given, in any given year for this year?
The, well, the, the, of a 5% increase in membership rates could generate approximately $12,000, $12,000 in extra revenue. However, as we've experienced through the years, when we implement an increase, the total amount of the increase is rarely the exact percentage rate. This year, I think that's going to be very apparent just because a lot of our activity enrollment is down so far due to COVID. Our youth program registrations are down drastically due to COVID. Swim lessons are down drastically due to COVID. So a lot of what we're doing is down and that's going to affect what we're doing membership wise. So I don't anticipate that $12,000 full increase in membership dollars in the upcoming fiscal year that the 5,000, the 5% increase could generate.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Langfield? If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion approving a 5% increase to the family recreation complex annual membership fees.
Motion to approve the annual increase to the membership fees of 5%. Second.
Motion in a second. Now, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? They're approved. Mr. Langfield, before you leave, I just wanted to say this to you, but you already know this, I'm going to speak to the members of the public. If you haven't been to the rec center recently, ladies and gentlemen, you haven't been to the rec center. That rec center is amazing. I, I venture to say that that is the nicest public rec center in this entire region. That, that place is absolutely beautiful. It's clean, it's well-maintained, the staff is wonderful, it's friendly, it's well-equipped. I don't think Tampa, Hillsborough, anybody's got anything like our rec center. So kudos to you and your staff for that.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the CARES Act funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the city of Temple Terrace. City Manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Before you this evening is a resolution approving a CARES Act funding agreement with Hillsborough County. In May, in May, the county was, had acquired $256 million for the purpose of coronavirus relief and economic security, under the Economic Security Act. CARES Act now provides funding relief, $150 billion of direct payments to the state and local government. In August of this year, we had been approached by the county with the, with the request to put together an expenditure, approximation of expenditures that we had incurred since March that were attributed to the coronavirus situation. In August, we sent a letter to Mr. Wagner, who was with the county, excuse me, with a letter for reimbursing $228,000 for COVID-related expenditures from the city. That has been approved by the B O C C. Subsequent to that request, the county had some conversations with, with Mr. Ross and suggested that we ask for more money. We subsequently sent a second letter requesting $2.9 million that is going before the Board of County Commissioners October 21st. In order to get any of this funding, obviously the 228 has already been approved, but in order to get that funding, this inter-local agreement needs to be signed and executed and delivered back to the county. So there's a resolution here in front of you to approve that agreement and move forward with getting these funds. The additional monies that will be presented to the council, to the Board of County Commissioners on October 21st will, will be incorporated in this agreement. You will not see another agreement coming back to you. So. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that council approves this funding agreement with Hillsborough County so we can move forward with getting those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Mr. Bergorlich? Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
David Bergorlich, City of Temple Terrace. Just a quick clarification question. So, if I understood correctly, approving the interlocal agreement tonight will not in any way impact the second funding request of the 2 million-plus?
It won't have any impact at all, but it will assure us that we will get the $2.9 million. In other words, we're not going to get any money until we...
Till you approve that.
Until we...
Okay. But approving it tonight doesn't squash the 2.9?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Thank you.
Correct. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If not, council member questions? Mr. Schuster?
Now, the 200... The original number, the 225,000, whatever that number was, that was for actual expenses that we've already done. Additionals, correct? We already did... We've already spent... We already spent the money on essentially a reimbursement.
Well, we put that 228 together with a little bit of extrapolation to the end of the year.
Okay.
For things that we had anticipated spending. Or had already spent, such as PPEs and partitions. That kind of stuff that was pretty routine with us.
Okay. So, therefore, we pretty much made ourselves whole with that at this point, essentially?
Yes, sir. I would say.
Now, the 2.9 that you were also requesting, what is that going to cover?
The 2.9, again, they suggested that there are things that we did not put in. We put in the things that we were reimbursed for, that we were looking for reimbursement for. The 2.9 are things such as improvements of buildings that we had not anticipated as part of what we need to do to get reimbursed. For instance, hands-free toilets, hands-free lavatories, hands-free paper towel dispensers. Anything that was related to COVID and trying to keep contact away from individuals and spreading are now evidently one of those things that we can put in to purchase.
Okay. So, if we don't spend the $2.9 million, we got to send it back?
If we don't spend the $2.9 million, we need to send whatever we don't spend back.
Let me rephrase that. Can we simply encumber it? Or does it have to... Can we simply encumber the funds, or does it have to be physically spent?
Well, you know, I've asked the county that direct question, and they said, I think I... It's kind of the FAQs to the agenda item. It does not say that it has to be spent and put in place. Here's a problem with this, and I put together a schedule that I put in front of you guys that staff and I have been working on for some time, on all these items that we can do improvements on. They're either improvements of buildings, they're personal protective equipment, some of it is technology improvements that we can incorporate in this $2.9 million. There's also some medical stuff that we can get taken care of as far as some equipment. For instance, infrared readers on temperature readings that we can put in each one of our buildings. Those are things that are agreed upon under the Act that we can spend money on. No one, not even the county, because I've asked the county this specific question, does it have to be purchased and does it have to be received by the end of the year? And they said, "Well, it doesn't say that, but we can't give you an interpretation." So, all of the county is driving this money. They're telling me that it has to be expended. So, I guess it's a matter of definition. Here's the problem with that. The problem is that everybody in the country now is looking for no-touch toilets.
This is after.
faucets. You've got a situation where... We have a situation nationwide. This is shortage of material to begin with. I don't understand how they can tell you that you have the ability to spend this money, right? And yet, you can't get the material, or you can't get the labor because the material is not available, right?
So, if you only have to encumber it, that's one thing, but if we have to actually physically spend and write a check, we could have... We could be creating ourselves a logistical nightmare to track it, prove it, and then get into all kinds of potential litigation and afterwards trying to validate it and verify it. I know I'm dealing with PPP for clients in the school, and I know how difficult it is. I'm not against it. I just don't know that if we don't need it, why take it? That's... It's somebody's tax money somewhere. So, that's just my personal thing. I mean, I agree you need to do the MOU, but I think we're opening ourselves a problem with the other 2.9, but we got to do it because otherwise you'll never get a chance to use any of it.
Well, I can tell you this. I'm a little leery to do this as well, and I'll tell you why. There are things that people have suggested that we do, and I'm going, "Well, that's kind of pushing the envelope here. I don't know that that's COVID-related."
Yeah.
I don't want to get us in a situation where we're having to give money back on stuff that we spent, okay? I cannot seem to get a straight answer on whether or not it needs to be purchased and in place. I'm working off right now the premise that because of the situation with materials and labor that we're dealing with nationwide, that if we encumber and give someone a PO in order to manufacture this stuff or deliver it, that that would work for us. So, the list that I put together, I need you guys to look at that because there are some things in there that are suspect, and there may be things in there that we don't have that council may want to add to the list.
Can I just comment on this?
Kind of a double-edged sword that we're dealing with here.
So, this money came available, $257 million that the county received, and the county is responsible for dispersing this money. This is federal money. This is not county money, but the county is responsible because only jurisdictions that have 500,000 people or more are eligible to receive this funding directly. So, Tampa didn't get any directly. We didn't get any. The county got it, and it's county-wide. So, they opened it up for cities, the three cities, to submit for some aid. Wasn't just for reimbursement. It was for stuff you need to do, right? The things that Mr. Stevenson talked about, the touch-free doors and fixtures. Being fiscally conservative, having nothing to go by because nobody's been through this before, Mr. Stevenson, we put in for 220, about a quarter million dollars, right? The county called me and said, "Guys, we're going to do whatever you want, but just by comparison, Tampa put in for $400 million..." Or, $40 million. $40 million, and Plant City put in for $4 million. So, if you want $200,000, great, but this is what other people are asking for. You sure you don't want to take a little deeper dive into this? Well, again, nobody had been through this before, and the parameters for this thing are a little shifty, so we weren't really sure what to put in for. Nobody's fault. I mean, we're trying to do the right thing.
No, I'm not sending...
But after that phone call, we're like, "Wait a minute." Every... You know, Plant City, not much bigger than us, they're putting in for $4 million. So, that's when we modified our request to 2.9. Now, I don't see any potential for getting in litigation and lawsuits and all that. I don't see any... The worst thing that can happen here, which is likely at this point, is we can't spend that much money in time, and we got to give it back. Whatever we don't spend, we got to give back. Mr. Stevenson is absolutely right. I poured through that interlocal agreement. The language in the interlocal agreement doesn't say encumbered. It doesn't say expended. It says for expenses incurred before December 30th, 2020. Now, I don't know what that means.
That's why I asked the question.
And they don't seem to know what it means either because it's federal language that's been transported from the federal requirement into the county's language. So, I don't know that the county themselves really knows the answer to that question.
Again, don't misunderstand. My comment was not a condemnation of what we did or didn't do. I agree with... If it's available, let's go after it. All I'm saying is... And again, it has something to do with the MOU because we need to do that regardless, and I'm supporting it, and I'll make a motion towards that. It's just that I know dealing with some of these peripheral money sources, when you have to... When you have a timed certain deadline, you got to pay that back. That could be a logistical nightmare trying to get and verify, and then, "Uh-oh, we spent the money, but it didn't qualify." So, now we have all these nice, neat little things, and now we got to pay for it, and that comes out of a different bucket. So, all I'm saying is we need to be very, very careful with it.
I do want to close the loop on something I said, though, that Tampa's request that initially was 40 million, the B O C C approved them for 20 million. They cut their request.
I saw that.
So, Tampa got 20 million. Plant City got their 4 million, and hopefully, we'll get the 2.9 million. And we only have a short time to spend it. Chances are, we can't spend it all, but this is done.
So, is it all hardscapes? Could we set up a fund to help our businesses buy the equipment they need?
No.
Okay. It's all something that we have to utilize on our profit?
Yeah. There's some business economic relief that is built in that the county is already doing under that program, and they're using some of this money to do that. Those programs are already set in place. There's about three or four different programs, and the businesses have to go to the county to get economic relief. This is for things such as medical equipment, personal protection equipment, building improvements. One of the things that we added to the schedule was... And again, it's unbelievably hard to spend $2.9 million. It really is a lot of money, and I really don't want to get us into a situation where anyone, whether it's the feds or the county, comes back and says, "Well, that's not really COVID-related."
Right.
So, everything that I've got on the list, we can pretty much guarantee...
What's this one?
Yes, ma'am. Guarantee to them that it is COVID-related. If we put in touch-free doors at the rec center, which is built into one of these... This schedule's put together for each facility, if you would. We could certainly get that done. Some of the issues that I've got, we're trying to get some fiber connectivity, right? Technology is one of those things that they've been... They've told me that is an appropriate expenditure of this money for the purpose of virtual conferencing and all this other stuff. We can, in fact, spend money on fiber connectivity. We got a price from a company that's been doing this work for us, and Miss Sally has gotten a price. For a couple hundred thousand dollars, we can connect the fire station, which is where our EOC is. We can connect Lightfoot, which is where we can hold virtual meetings if we have the ability to, and certainly fiber-connect this building. The problem is, and here's the problem I'm dealing with, they're telling me, "Yeah, we can do the work for you, but we're going to be six months out because everybody wants this work done." That's the problem that I'm dealing with. We can certainly get all this work done. If we can work off the premise, and I think we would be safe in doing this, that we can issue a purchase order that, in fact, this work will be encumbered, both labor and materials, I think we should be okay with the list of materials that I put together, okay? I can't sit here and guarantee you because they can't give me a straight answer, and Mr. Ross has certainly had conversations with him as well. But I feel comfortable enough that I've kind of thought through this enough that I'm comfortable that we can do this.
Mr. Trillo?
Just a quick question. We've talked about this long enough, but like the tippers that you're putting on, these garbage cans we're buying, is that something that would qualify?
You know, I thought about that, and I guess we could, but seeing we've already got it built into the budget, that process is already moving forward, actually thought about maybe using some of this money to do the identical service with the recycle, okay? The problem with it is the recycle program, the recycle industry now is in such disarray. We don't know what's happening with recycle. There is no single source available.
Can that money be retroed for stuff you've done over the last six months? I mean, since COVID's been in place, or is it... It's got to be new expenditures from when you secure the money?
No, it can be as long as it's from March to the end of December.
From March to December.
Well, you said you've got the carts budgeted. Well, you didn't know this money was coming up until here a month or two back, so technically that may not be grounds, but just a thought. I mean, you're already talking about a...
Well, you know, I kind of thought about that, but again, I don't want to get us caught between a rock and a hard place trying to explain. We started this program already, and now all of a sudden you want to use federal money to do this. I don't want anybody questioning us on what we're doing. Now, I'm of the attitude, I'm a little conservative when it comes to that. I don't like people asking questions. I like to be transparent with everybody. This is what we're doing.
Sure.
I don't... I don't want anybody coming back and saying, "Why did you do..." Justify that to us. Anything that is on this list, and certainly things that are COVID-related as far as the spreading of COVID, certainly is on this list, and I think more than appropriate.
And I would agree with Mr. Stevenson. Having looked at what... I've seen Tampa's list and Plant City's list of what they're doing with their money, and we would be in an... I mean, we would be... Yeah, we would be something completely different.
I've had conversations, again, trying to work along the same parameters as Plant City. I've had conversations with their city mayor, and we're in line with what they're trying to do as well. Problem is, is we got to get in line before they do on some of this stuff, but manufacturing's a problem, just trying to get material.
All right. Are there other questions so we can...
Move to approve the CARES Act funding agreement.
I'm not trying to rush. If you've got other questions, let's... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to approve the CARES Act funding agreement with Hillsborough County.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The interlocal authorization to sign the interlocal is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a three-year employment agreement with the city manager, and it says here that I will explain. So, I will do my best. Council members, I was notified that this was going to be on the agenda a week or two ago at least, ahead of time, but I mistakenly thought that it was going to be on the agenda for us to begin discussions about whether to enter... Start the negotiation process, or I didn't realize until I got the agenda on Wednesday or Thursday when it came out that there was actually going to be a draft of a contract for us to approve tonight, or that's what we're being asked to do. So, what I'd like to do, in keeping with our rules of order here, I'm going to introduce the item and kind of go through the proposed changes that are in this draft contract so that everybody understands and the public understands as well, and then we'll have public comment like we always do. And then, prior to a motion, this is where I want to dip a little bit. I'm going to open it up for council discussion. Normally, we don't have any discussion until there's been a motion made, but we haven't discussed this at all. So, I'm going to vary a little bit here and open this up for discussion. So, that's kind of how we'll handle this. So, the contract, the proposed contract before us is the renewal of the city manager's employment contract. His employment contract expires on February the 26th of 2021, right? What's before us tonight is Mr. Stevenson's first draft request of the council. There's been no back-and-forth discussion and negotiation or anything yet, but this is his first draft. So, the primary differences, I'm not going to go through the whole contract because it's pages, but the differences are what I'm going to highlight. The salary, Mr. Stevenson, along with all the other general employees, just received a 4% increase. So, the salary indicated in his proposed contract is the same salary that he's getting now because he just got a 4% raise six days ago like everybody else, right? So, the salary's not any different. The significant changes are that Mr. Stevenson's proposed contract includes no cap on the amount of vacation time that he can accrue, whereas the city rules in his contract currently capped the accruals at 450 hours for all employees, including Mr. Stevenson. The other significant... Next significant difference is that upon separation, Mr. Stevenson would be paid dollar for dollar for all accrued vacation and all accrued sick time. The current city rules in the current contract limit that payout to 450 hours of vacation, which is the max you can accrue by city rules, and no payout for unused sick time for city employees. That's the city rules. This proposed contract exempts him from that. The next significant change would be a 20% retirement contribution to his pension. Currently, the... Currently, the contract that he's currently under, we contribute 15% of his gross salary towards a retirement fund. The rest of the city employees, including the other two charter officers, we contribute 10%. So there's a 5% increase requested in the retirement contribution. And then there's also a request for a $100 a month increase in the vehicle allowance from the current $500 a month to $600 a month. Those are the key differences in the proposed contract. So that is the introduction, and now I'll ask if there are members of the public who wish to address this item. I have a couple of requests. The first one is from Ms. Jan Tumbleson. Good evening, Ms. Tumbleson. We know who you are, but we still need you to state your name and city of residence.
Jan Tumbleson? City of Temple Terrace. Okay. Now, first of all, okay, I put a lot of work in this, okay? All right. The mission statement for Temple Terrace is professional service for our community. Your efforts to plan and execute the process, which leads to the desirable outcome for the betterment of the city. And this is what the citizens want and hope. You are all elected and appointed because of your great plans for Temple Terrace. People voted for you because of your background and the fields you represent. Working together with one voice with the plans of the city is a comfort. City manager cannot go forward without direction. He requires your full support and guidelines to make the city amazing. Okay. You're aware of his qualifications. Knowledge of the city, the goals, to keep it to be the amazing city. He acknowledges the financial situation, which has improved greatly because not only the redevelopment, but the annexation. The knowledge of the contracts, contacts, I'm sorry, contacts throughout the city, county, and state are valuable to this city. Okay? The knowledge of services required and expected within the city. Now, these are things that Charles is aware of, and this is his duties. Okay? He works well with council, departments, residents, and staff to perform the duties. He administers goals and wishes of the councils, and he's able to delegate. All right. Let's talk, okay, let's talk about accomplishments. A balanced budget for the past three years. Salary increase over several years for all the employees. He's reduced tax levy for the past two years. He has placed $200,000 into reserves in 2018 and 19, and 2019 and '20. Capital projects scheduled and include infrastructure throughout the city. And the retention ponds do not flood. Okay. He's kept all the city staff employed throughout the year with the changing of the hours and a safe environment by closing. I'm already finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbleson.
Okay. That's it?
That's three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
What's your final sentence?
I tried. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jack Ritter.
Good evening, sir.
Jack Ritter, Temple Terrace, 75 years, come December. It's not my opinion, but it's the opinion of several that live around me that I communicate with, that this contract proposal is premature. We've got approximately five months. We don't even know what the appraisals are for the last performance period. Why are we rushing into this? This thing needs to be deferred. We need to have a public airing of his performance over this period of time. We just need to hold off on this. I think that the package is worth 211,000-plus. That's outrageous. And some of the things we're asking for, as I told you in an email, is when you leave the government. I left after 10 years of federal service. I didn't get paid for sick leave, and I had 10 years of sick leave that I didn't use. I got paid for 240 hours, or would have been paid for 240 hours of vacation, which I donated to somebody who's on leave without pay. I don't understand this grab for money out of this city. So take that under advisement. I recommend you defer this to some later date after the first of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this? Mr. Pogorovich?
Thank you.
You know the routine. Please state your name and city of residence.
David Pogorovich, City of Temple Terrace. It just, as I recall, the last time this came up, what you voted on first was to have someone, I believe it was Councilman Ross at the time, not Mayor Ross, to sit down with Charles and hash out the back-and-forth, and then bring something to council. We seem to have skipped that step. The other question I have, and maybe you've already vetted this, but it, on the surface at least, it seems some of the requests, like no caps on the sick time and getting paid all the sick time and the vacation time and all that, I don't know that that's legal. I think there might be some state requirements that may have a say in that. Because I know, like, in the college system, the USF system, there are some limits placed on sick time, and in the county as well. My wife actually works for a county, and they have state-mandated limits that apply to everybody, whether you're a director or not. So if that's been vetted already, fine. I just wasn't aware that it was. And again, it just seems to me that you are putting the cart in front of the horse at this time around, in that I don't see where there's been any history of any kind of negotiations. It's just, here it is, approve it. So I would recommend that if you prove anything, you approve the process, the negotiation process, rather than just an up-and-down vote on this particular contract version. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gogorovich. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this item? Seeing none, I'll open the discussion with a couple of comments, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the council. I have concerns about this for two reasons. And the first one is the timing. This contract has five months left on it. It doesn't come due until four months after the election. We're 28 days away from the election. It doesn't come due for four months after the election. That's how it's been done in the past, the, well, yeah, November, December, January, February. The 2018 contract that Mr. Stevenson currently works under was approved on February 6, 2018. It's the same, and it was, the contract that he worked under before that was intentionally done. It was made in July of 2016, and the date was set for February. I think it was a little late. I think it was set for January. But it was approved on February the 6th. You guys, the new council members at the time, got the vote for that, right? You were, it was the same timing. We're not talking about changing the timing. It's the same timing that was, has been used. So that's number one. I don't think it's, I don't think it's transparent to renew the contract five months early just to deprive one of these three candidates. One of them's going to be sitting up here, and they're not going to get a voice in this. That's one. That's number one. Number two is, there's some particulars in the significant increases in compensation that there's been no back-and-forth, there's been no discussion. And I did in 2018, I was appointed by the council to do that, and we did. We met, and we had good negotiations. I mean, and, you know, if you've ever been in negotiations, you always ask for the sky, right? I mean, you don't know if you don't ask, right? So you always ask for a lot, and then you get some of what you wanted. You don't get everything. That's the nature of negotiations, whether you're buying a car or whether you're signing a contract. That hasn't occurred. So for those two reasons, I would ask, I would hope that this discussion will lead us, and I'm not trying to advocate for not renewing, I'm just trying to advocate for doing it in the manner that we've done in the past, and do this in a manner that protects the financial interest of the city too, which I'll get into that if we need to. But that's, those are my initial comments. Mr. Sishter.
One point of clarification.
Sure.
We weren't elected yet.
2018?
We didn't get elected until November of 18. So you guys were.
Oh, I apologize.
We weren't on there.
So it's all our fault?
You were there.
I stand corrected. I apologize.
Not to be picky. I was surprised when this issue came up a couple of months ago. I think it was back in July that this discussion was had, and then you had brought it up, I believe, initially. And I don't know whether you brought it up because you were asked to bring it up, or you brought it up on your own. But I admit that I was surprised at that point too, given the fact that the contract was not renewing until the end of February. So while I fully support, you know, going forward, I think it's a little premature to do it at this point. I don't necessarily think that it's important for a new council member to be in position, okay? I just don't think that, it shouldn't be more than 90 days before the contract renewal period. I mean, in all fairness, Mr. Stevenson needs to give, theoretically, needs to give us 90 days' notice if he's going to leave. And in fairness to him, if the contract is not negotiable to his liking, which I don't see why we couldn't come to some agreement, given the opportunity to sit down and go back and forth with the negotiation cycle, you know, he needs to be able to make plans. He needs to be able to have time within his schedule to make certain plans. Don't necessarily know what they are, and I'm not opting for that. I'm not advocating for that. I think it's very, very important that, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on. We're in the middle of a lot of things in the city, and the continuity of stable management and administration is absolutely critical. There've been issues, and there's always going to be issues. There's no such thing as a perfect relationship. But I think that in fairness to him, we should broach this issue so that a contract can be done in ample time 90 days before. I think it's, I still think, and I, again, I support the extension of a contract to him, I just think it's still early to do it, and I think we need to go through the negotiation process, one-on-one, not en masse. I don't think it's fair to anybody to do this en masse, in public. It's, and we have some questions that need to be answered. So from Ms. Sashon, as far as the legality of increasing the accruals and the propriety of moving the sick pay into an accrued, I can't think of the word, an accrued time. Can we make it more than 450? Is it 450 or, yeah, 450? And can we shift the sick time into that? I don't know if we can or can't, okay? But I think it's, I think it's, in fairness to Mr. Stevenson, he needs to know that we support him, and in fairness to the process, I tend to agree, we need to do it in due course and proper time. Whether it's a new council or not, I would submit that this is the council that he's worked with for the last three years, two to three years or whatever. And, you know, it's, we have other issues where the current administrations get the right to do things versus other people. So that's, and bigger issues than here. But that's my thoughts on that, that'll stop.
Other comments? Ms. Mirdana here.
One of the reasons I asked tonight about the PRM contract is that it expired in May. We put out a request for proposals in July, and here we are in October. So why, you know, tonight, we ratified a new contract. So this seems to be, I'm guessing that that happens quite a bit with some of the large contracts we have. So I too am surprised that we're being asked to do this so far in advance. I'm also very concerned about some of the points, and I don't want to talk about the points because then we'll be negotiating, okay? But some of these create unfunded mandates. And I don't know who looked at the contract, but some of those things, you know, right now, we have a reason for capping things, we have a reason for allowing a certain number because they are either state statute or they're in our rules and regulations. I mean, our employees are treated one way, we need to make sure. Now, apparently, the last contract was a pretty sweet deal. I mean, everybody else is getting 10%, and we gave our city manager 15, which we agreed to that. So, you know, I'm not complaining about that. I'm just saying 20% is really a hike. Personally, I also feel like, I know that, Mr. Mayor, you laid out a very nice timeline for how to handle the evaluations, and I've, you know, everybody's seen them now. I would like to meet with Mr. Stevenson and lay out why I said what I said. I have some concerns about a few things, and rather than, you know, air them here, I'd like to find out, you know, what's his justification for this, or this new policy, or this thing that's been created by him? So I thank you for giving us the opportunity to postpone this because, you know, we've already had Mr. Ritter pointed out, this is premature, and it's loaded with things that somebody, and it may be you, it may be somebody else, to sit down and hammer out these details. But I also, you know, if we're going to go into contract, I have some points I would make, but I won't because I don't think that it would be right to negotiate and not negotiate, you know? So I'm going to hold off on those comments. But whoever is the negotiator, I would appreciate being able to give these facts to. So I don't know if we're going to decide that tonight, or just postpone this to another time, or push it down the road, or I don't know how far, or how, you know, how detailed do you want to get tonight?
Well, that's up to the council. I mean, I have thoughts, I've made some comments. Mr. Chambers.
I too agree that this is premature. I don't know if we have to wait right to 90 days. You know, we need to probably have a little bit more time than 90 days to get it all aired out. I'm concerned about the process of one person negotiating. I could see when that was done the first time with the contract, but example, I may agree with the sick leave policy, you may not, but the negotiator doesn't know our wishes, and we can't pass notes to the negotiator. We can't do that. We have to do that in an open forum. So I'm kind of concerned about how this process is going to go forward. But I do think tonight is certainly premature. That's it.
Mr. Truro, any comments?
Yeah, just in the past, I know that the way they've done it, throughout my tenure here at least, was that the, you know, the mayor would meet with the city manager and sort of have some talking points. If it's a new contract, it's a new contract, but if it's an existing contract, at least there's a starting point, and they go from there. At least, that's how we did it with Mr. Lineball, with all the others in the past. So, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing that take place, you know, at least on some of these boards that I've sat on throughout the years, when there is, you know, evaluations, you know, you've got the evaluations first, whether it's one-on-one meetings, which I think are most effective, versus just putting it all out on the table and everybody just having a bash session, whereas each person discusses their evaluation with the city manager. And it's public information. If the evaluation is submitted, anybody can ask for public record requests and get that evaluation. So there's no secret. But this keeps it more direct as to what are your concerns, and what are your concerns towards the city manager? So that's how it's happened in the past. And, you know, maybe this way, there's no reason why it shouldn't go that way this time around as well. But in the past, we've used the mayor to, you know, let somebody designate. There's got to be a starting point. Unfortunately, sunshine laws, you know, we can't all just get in a room and have a little. But he has the starting, you know, the starting points to existing contract, and they go from that point there. Doesn't... Doesn't prohibit you from, or any of us, saying, I don't like this or how about this suggestion or that suggestion? And then that can grow wings and you get your input at that point too. But, I mean, it's got to start somewhere, so that's it.
We did it in twenty eighteen, is, you know, I can't speak to previous. Because, but twenty eighteen, I don't know how I was selected, I don't remember. But I was asked to, and it was, it went fine. I mean, Charles and I met, I don't know, what, half a dozen times maybe at the most? And as negotiations always go, at the time, he asked for things that I said, well, you know, I don't speak for council, but I can't, I won't, I can't support that. And then he would say, well, okay, well, what about this? And, I mean, it was a good back and forth. I mean, I thought we were pretty successful. And then when I presented that to the council for consideration, any points of difference, of course, Mr. Stevenson's sitting right here too. So any, and he gets to speak also. Any points of difference that we had, we pointed out to the whole county. You guys are here, you remember. We pointed out to the whole council, it was like, okay, we were a little off on this. So I think that the residential requirement, the residential living in Temple Terrace, that was one issue. The car back then was an issue. We had some back and forth. And it was just laid out here. I mean, it wasn't ugly or anything. I mean, it was just laid out, and then the council said, well, this is what we want to do. So that's how we did it. I don't know how we could do it. I mean, I certainly don't mind not being the guy to do it. But I don't know how we, being a sunshine board, I don't know how you could do it. I know that the school district and the airport, everybody has the same. The county administrator, they all have the same kind of situation, so.
I actually brought it up at the Florida League of Cities meeting last week. We were talking about, you know, sunshine laws. And everyone had the same concern. When they're talking about the contract for their charter employees, they have to talk about it out in the open. And sometimes, if someone has not lived up to their contract and wasn't obvious to the public, well, now it's obvious, you know? So, and they all agreed that it was a problem. But, you know, my question, and I would like to get a ruling on this at some point. There are, there are points that each of us have done our homework, and we have things that we would like the negotiator to know. Do we have to wait then until the negotiation has gone through to share? We can't share that information with each other, right? I mean, how do we?
You can give the information to me or to the clerk. And it can be given to the negotiator without your name on it. There cannot be any back and forth discussions about it amongst you or between you. But you can provide the information altogether to one. The one negotiator may negotiate with the city manager regarding the contract but cannot make any promises, cannot make any decisions about any of the terms. You can discuss it, but it must come then back to the whole council to make any decision. So it's okay for one person to be chosen as the negotiator, but they cannot be given the authority to approve anything.
That makes sense.
I wouldn't want that if we could.
And also, remember, it's only going to be one new person on this council. So you're talking about, it takes three votes to do anything. You're going to have five people who can vote. You're going to have one new person. So we're not talking about a drastic change here in leadership, so.
So here's what I need from the council tonight, and Mr. Stevenson needs this too. I need some clear direction as to how to go forward because he deserves it and I need it. I will say one thing, that I believe in the interest of fairness that this is fair. I don't think it's likely that this council's not going to renew. I don't know. I don't, you know, we won't know till the night of that vote. But I don't, but however, his contract does expire on February the 26th. If we don't renew, and suppose we don't vote on this till, I don't know, January 5th or 4th or whatever the first, you know, I don't know. That doesn't give Mr. Stevenson much time that the city's not going to renew. And I'm not, and I agree with him, but I don't think that's quite fair. I mean, if we get into the holidays, I don't know if we're going to do this before. I don't know, because I'm waiting for you to tell me. But whoever makes a motion here to tell me what you want us to do, what we're going to vote on, if it's going to be prolonged, I would ask or request you to consider, in your motion to tell me whatever you want to make move to do, I would ask that you consider extending the date of his current contract back. Because if you, if we extended it to March or April or something, it takes that pressure off. Now, we can renew it earlier than that. But if we didn't renew, let's just say in the beginning of January, that doesn't give him enough time to make life plans. And so I would ask you to consider that. And I don't know that we need to wait till February or January. I'm just saying that depending on what you tell me to do, keep that in the back of your mind. Because if you're not going to renew, I don't think it's fair to tell somebody six weeks ahead of time that you're not going to renew. Mr. Stevenson, we've been talking a lot about you.
You have, and I appreciate all the dialogue. And just to clarify just a couple of things. And I think, thank you for bringing that up. If you're looking to extend my contract, my current contract, six months, I am not interested, and I will tell you that quite out. I need a new contract. I need to know that I have a contract moving forward very quickly here so that I don't get into the holidays and I don't get into January where the contract is expiring in a month or two months.
Well, that's what I was trying to relieve you of.
I do not think that is a fair situation to put me in. I've got to give you ninety days' notice. I think I deserve a little bit more than ninety days that you're not going to renew. So really, that is, that's the biggest thing.
Not to be disrespectful, Mr. Stevenson, but you signed a contract that doesn't expire till February 26th. So we're not being unfair to you to hold you to the end of that contract.
Well, is it fair for me to just kind of give you a ninety day notice?
That's what the contract says.
Well, I guess if that's where we're headed, I guess that's where we're headed.
Well, I don't think that's where we're headed unless that's where you want to head.
Let me clarify a couple of things here. I met with each of you individually two weeks ago. I gave each of you a contract, this, the same contract that's on the agenda tonight, for your review. I've heard nothing back from any of you on any issues with that contract whatsoever. Your city attorney has reviewed this contract for legalities. I've asked her to do that. She never once gave me anything and said it was illegal. The reason for putting a no cap on vacation, right now, as of today, I am maxed out, right? And I took last week off, and I am maxed out. The first year that I took over this position, I gave this city about forty hours worth of vacation time because I did not use it, okay? So that being said.
Order please in the gallery. Please keep silent.
I've given a lot up, and I just don't want to continue to give and give and give. I don't think that it is feasible for me to be taking four weeks of vacation during the year. I accrue more vacation than I can use up. But if this council wants me to start using vacation, you're going to start seeing a lot less of me. I don't want that to happen, okay? I love what I do, and I love being here, and I don't like being away. So I'm surprised that I hadn't heard back from any of you in the last two weeks. It certainly is not the way that I thought this would go tonight. But I do appreciate that dialogue. We've been talking about a month on how to initiate this. And I do appreciate whatever you want to agree to, to get this thing rolling in the right direction. I am open to do that and open to negotiations, so.
All right, council, I need somebody to try to put this in the joint. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I moved that we enter into negotiations with Mr. Stevenson, you being the point person with that, Mr. Ross. And bring it back to council, if at all possible, before Thanksgiving.
What date is that?
I'm sorry?
The second meeting?
Be the second meeting, yeah.
Of November?
Second meeting in November.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
You do have a second.
I'll second for discussion, although I can't support that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Chambers, you're recognized.
Yeah, I agree with the first part. The date I would go is our Monday meeting, the second. And it is with the current council. It's the night before the election, but November 2nd.
Oh, yeah.
That just, that gives you three weeks. And it gives more time. The second meeting in November, we're going to be dealing with, I mean, well, I guess what's our swearing in would be the first meeting in December. It'd be first meeting in December, so we could come back.
I'm ambivalent to either the first or second in November. It doesn't matter. I think, you know, three to three, I just was trying to give three to four weeks to let everybody meet and discuss the particulars of the contract that are in question. That's all.
So do you wish to amend your motion?
I'll amend the motion to the first meeting, yeah.
Go ahead and amend your motion then, if you would please. Remember what to amend it to?
I amended it to November, it was the second.
So that's the Monday night before the election?
That's our Monday night meeting.
Monday, Tuesday, it doesn't matter.
What's today, the sixth?
Yeah, November 2nd is the Monday.
Right, it's the second, it'd be three weeks.
Three weeks?
Four weeks. Four weeks.
Four weeks?
Roughly.
Mr. Stevenson, you have a voice, and I know you're, this isn't normally time for you to speak, but.
I didn't. Four weeks, four weeks negotiation period.
The motion on the floor is for you and I to negotiate and bring something, a proposal, back to the council on November the 2nd. Is that, and that's seconded too?
Yes, that's seconded also.
That's the motion, is that correct?
Yes, that's the motion, yes.
Now, I know it's a little unorthodox, but what are your feelings on that motion before we?
We can get it done. I mean, that's one, I have no doubt that we can get it done.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
So we have one meeting in between, and then we have a meeting?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
One more meeting in October, and then we, by then you will have sat down and gone over everything.
Correct.
I just want to say, the reason I did not approach city manager is I didn't think I could. It was a contract that was being, so maybe I'm deviating from here. But he raised the question that nobody came and talked to him. So I have a lot to say to him about this contract, so, and I'll be happy to do that. But if you're my negotiator, I will forego that.
Okay, well, each council member is welcome, was encouraged to meet with Mr. Stevenson to discuss their evaluation, and the other two employees too, to discuss their evaluation. It's inappropriate for you to discuss mine or, you know, but to discuss your evaluation with that employee. You and the employees were both encouraged to have those meetings if you so desired. But that's up to you to set it up or them to reach out to you or, you know, however. So the motion, let's not get too far from the motion. The motion is to enter negotiations, bring something back to the council on November 2nd. Is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Chulora?
My only suggestion, Mr. Mayor, would be that if you reach, I mean, you did a fine job last time, didn't you? But if you reach a sticking point, maybe at that next meeting between now and then, maybe bring it to the council to see where it's at instead of, you know, coming to approve or disapprove this thing and then having a big, you know?
Right.
So that's the only suggestion I may have, to keep it moving along.
Good suggestion, thank you. Other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays. Mr. Stevenson, you and I will get together here and.
Thank you, thank you, Kenny.
And it is my intent, just like in twenty eighteen, if there are, we're reaching impasse on a certain item, I am not going to assume I have authority. I mean, I'm not going to do that. You're going to get, you know, we'll hash it out at the meeting about what we can't agree on. So you'll know.
Mr. Mayor, I do have, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Mr. Chulora?
Something in the past years that I found very productive and effective during my tenure, and not just here on other boards, is that sometimes during meetings, not just this meeting and other boards that all of us serve on, there's grandstanding and bashing sessions. I've found that most effective in the past, when an evaluation is done, that there be one-on-one meeting with the administrator or city manager, whoever, whatever the title may be, and the individual council person. Because when you get up here and there's five evaluations and everybody's bouncing all over the board, really, what I'm concerned is my evaluation towards the city manager. And not what yours is or yours is, but what mine is, and that should be his problem and my problem, to fix and improve. I think sometimes it just gets too emotional. And I'm referring back to, back in the day when I used to sit on Heartline, was very bad, rough days. And the executive director at that point would actually meet one-on-one and extinguish any, what are your concerns? You know, okay, what can I do better? How do we communicate better? And I found that to be very, very productive. Instead of getting up here and then it becomes, you know, a public lashing one way or the other. I'm not saying that's what we do here. I've just found that much more advantageous and productive based on what I've experienced in the past. So if any of you have an issue or need to speak with the manager, whatever the, your concerns or, and then if it doesn't get resolved, obviously, your option is to bring it to the council and say, hey, here's where I'm at. This is why I'm not in favor or in support of it. So, but give it an opportunity to work itself out. And if it doesn't, obviously, the next option is have your public discussion or whatever you want to do. But that's really worked well, and it's kept everything moving along. At least for me, it has in the past. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chulora. Very well. Next item is council business. Is there any carryover business from previous council meetings?
Not from previous, I have new business.
Okay, next item is new business and board reports.
Okay. Falls on their board reports. Each of you has a packet. It's from the Florida League of Cities. It's about the policy development process. You don't have to get it out and read it tonight. It's long. I will be representing you on this committee. Now, I've been, you know, I've been doing it for a couple of years. And this year, Mr. Ross said, Mayor Ross said, how about telling us what y'all are talking about, which makes absolute sense, and I'd be more, so I gave you all of the issues that are known to be coming to us in the legislature. So short-term rentals, by the way, they never call it vacation rentals. They always call it what it is, short-term rentals. Other policies, fireworks, I mean, there's about seven issues here. We will whittle it down to our top policy that we're going to focus on. So some of these, when you get a chance, you will see that they are, I mean, there's a lot of backup material, especially the short-term rental one. There's a lot of backup material. And so we'll go over that. I know Mr. Schisler was on a committee before. He knows exactly what I'm talking about. We will narrow it down to which one do we want to focus on. That doesn't mean that the Florida League of Cities isn't going to have an opinion on all of the others. It's just that when we set our policies, that is one. Now, the last several years, short-term rentals continues to come up because it is such an issue, especially for home rule. And one of the things we all need to know, the listening public needs to know, that Florida League of Cities only focuses on bills that affect home rule. So there may be some other issue out there that is, you know, taking up all the breathing room, but they're only going to talk about those. So that's what you have. So that's what, each of you have a packet. If you're interested in looking at, if you have an opinion, you and I are not going to vote on whether or not this policy goes forward. So I believe, you know, if you have one that you think I should go for, then let me know, okay? Otherwise, you know, I'll be listening to all the conversation. We have a meeting on October 23rd, and then we have a two-day meeting in November. October 23rd and then we have a two-day meeting in November. So, anyway, just thank you for asking me to bring this to them, that was important.
And thank you, Mrs. Donahue, and for those of you, I've, I've asked you to, to give us some visibility, I've been trying to do that and we've done, I think, trying to do a better job of, we need to tell each other what we're doing on our various boards and stuff because, you know, we don't think about it. And at the center of all this, I really think, you know, we, we sit up here and we talk about communication, we usually, we're talking about other people, but we have, the five of us have to remember that Mr. Stevenson needs to know what we're doing too, because he talks to our lobbyists, he talks to, and if he doesn't know what we're up to, we're liable to be working at cross purposes, so we've got to remember that, that, that whole communication thing's cut, cuts both ways there, so, thank you. Other new business or board reports, Mr. Chambers?
And I may steal some of city manager's thunder or somebody, but, you know, we were all given the new playbook for Parks and Leisure Services, thank you, everybody, I wanted you, everybody look at the back cover when you get yours, it's a tribute to Kim Straub. I want, whoever's idea it was, city manager, Lori, Carl, anybody, what a great idea, thank you very much, this is a nice, very nice tribute.
It was all her.
Thank you, and it's going to make me cry like Jerry, but anyway, thank you very much for this tribute, it was well done.
Thank you for bringing that up, I didn't know, I didn't look at it yet, thank you.
And you did steal my thunder.
Good, one, one down, off your list.
I got a feeling you'll think of some more thunder.
That's one last thing I got to mention.
Other new business or board reports? Okay, Mr. Stevenson, city manager's report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things here, just, I, I had contacted each of you to try to set some time on October 20th, if you were conducting workshop to discuss some health insurance options. We've been in serious conversation, discussion with not only United, but a, the Advent Health people, and I think we've got some viable options that we want to share with council. One is a self-insured situation, partially self-insured situation, that has the potential to save us a bunch of money, and there, there's some caveats beyond it, and I need to make sure the council's comfortable with us moving in that direction, from the traditional United healthcare that we've been doing. So, if everybody's in agreement, I'd like to do that at 4:30, that ought to give us about an hour to talk to, to talk to this new company, they're willing to come in and make a presentation to council so that you guys understand their program, as well as bringing up to speed with the conversations that we've been having with United Healthcare, because it's time to start talking about renewal of that, that contract as well. So, if everybody's in agreement with that, we'll set that up for 4:30, what I'd like to be able to do is do it in this room, so that we have the ability to do PowerPoint and certainly other public can, can weigh in and kind of follow what's going on as well, so, if everybody's okay with that date?
We have a thumbs up on that?
Good.
Okay, we have a date?
I have a question.
Thank, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Donahue. Vice Mayor Donahue?
You have a, we're trading back our titles, you have an employee committee, right? Have they vetted this, these, these new programs or?
The employee committee will know about this before the 20th meeting, okay?
Okay, so.
We have incorporated, um, human resources, obviously, but we're, I don't know that I want to vet this with the employment committee until council understands that this is a good direction to go, all right? This, this new direction is a new way of approaching healthcare with our employees, it has the potential not only to save them money, but to save the city a bunch of money, so, I don't want to go to the employee committee until I know the council's okay with us going in this direction, so.
Are you going to be looking for a decision from us on that day?
No, I kind of want, just want you guys to make sure that you guys are comfortable with this program, because there is a little bit of liability involved, potentially, okay? Potentially.
Will it come back to us for a decision, or is this an administrative decision?
This is an administrative decision that I, we will have to make, but, um, this doesn't affect the retirees, the retirees will be involved with this whole thing as well, so.
Mr. Chambers, I'm.
Question, the, the employee insurance committee, I know they'll get it slightly before us or maybe not, can they be at this workshop also, members of that committee?
Sure, we can invite them to come.
Thank you.
Good idea. And I've, I've invited the, you know, we, we talked about this morning, the staff meeting as well, the directors have been invited to come, so, they can hear this and they can pass this on, so, I think it's a great idea, but we'll see. We've kind of worked some numbers and I've had some help working those numbers, so, we'll see what happens with it. Couple other things, if I can, we're trying to, I, I know we're not having Winter Wonderland, which is typically when we start talking about Veterans Day activities and everything else, and I'm sorry, not Winter Wonderland, but the.
I was going to say, when did that happen?
The Art Festival, getting my days mixed up here, but saying that we've kind of canceled those activities or gone virtually with those, we're trying to, the city and, and Ms. Hayes is helping me with this, is trying to find a way to recognize our veterans in town, we are trying to put a request out there from everyone and everybody on TV now, if you know veterans that have served in the, are armed forces in the past, we would love to know their name and their address, so that we can kind of recognize them, we're trying to put something together and is on the cusp of solidifying what we're going to do, but it will involve all the veterans that we have here in town and we certainly are open for any, any information that we can get on any veterans that we have here in town. We've gotten a bunch of responses so far, just from email requests, but certainly if, if this council or anyone of the listening public knows of veterans, make sure they're on our list, please. The other, the last thing, I'd like for chief to come up, Chief Obano, tonight, obviously, is traditionally the night that we celebrate National Night Out, which is certainly a national program, saying that it has been canceled, I'd like for, for chief to, that's not a microphone. I'm about to take that off of there, everybody thinks that's a microphone, just to kind of brief us on the, on the whole idea of National Night Out and certainly.
Welcome, chief.
Recognize that we support our police department.
Thank you, Wallace, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know for a fact, I don't need to, to tell you guys about National Night Out, but it is a nice opportunity to be able to share with the community that may be watching who's not familiar, National Night Out actually started nationally in 1984 and was well-established here in Temple Terrace before I even came to the city back in 2006, but certainly since I've been here, it's been our premier event, our premier event and outreach to our citizens, to be able to show outwardly to, to them and to those that are unfamiliar with Temple Terrace, the true partnership that we have here in Temple Terrace. It is, it is in some cases throughout the country, maybe the only event that, that a police department has to, to reach out to their citizens, but we have many, but this certainly, tonight, not being able to, to bring the kids out and the families out and, and to have the pizza and all the interaction and the crafts and the things that we are able to do, disappointing, disappointing to some of the people that look forward to it, disappointing to our, a couple of our crime watchers that are, that are still active, and, and to the men and women here at the police department that look forward to that, Patrick, planning that. I can tell you, I, I greatly appreciate the, the, the wearing of the National Night Out t-shirts and I encourage you to wear them, not just tonight, but when you're out in the community, I, I wear mine, even outside of Temple Terrace, and people ask me about, you know, what's National Night Out, where it's a chance to, to bring the community visibly into partnership with this police department by coming out together, sharing a meal, sharing some camaraderie, going back to the house, turn your lights on, the lights, light up your communities, that, that's, that's a big help, just that one simple act is a big help to your police department, lights discourage crime. So, tonight, we couldn't bring the community out to celebrate together with us, but tonight, we have shared, Lori Hayes helped us, we have shared with the community, turn your lights on, and our officers are going to be driving around looking to find the communities, the crime watch areas, our citizenry who have their porch lights on, and if they do, well, we're going to let them know that we're there and we appreciate it by turning our lights on and driving through the community, so if anybody calls you, we're not being invaded, we have no big major thing, knock on wood, but your police officers tonight will be out doing everything they can to, to say thank you to our citizens. Our citizens and the partnership that we have and with the support of this council has always been the, the, the mainstay and, and our abilities to provide the exemplary service that, that we try to do each and every day, and, and we thank them and we thank all of you for your support.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. One last thing, great job with the playbook, our playbook has come a long way since being paper pages, it is eight and a half by 10 glossy's, Lori does a great job of doing this, and again, quite a tribute to Ms. Kim Straub that was, again, her idea and I know that she was fairly close with Kim and I know that means a lot to her, so, thank you. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Candidate forum? Candidate forum?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, I didn't.
About the. Okay, Mr.?
Go ahead, no, do the candidate.
Okay.
Yeah, just, it just, and I'm sorry that it, it's on the list and I even forgot it, I didn't even read it, but candidate forum next month, next Tuesday, 6:00 PM, our three candidates are here and the audience, we have set all this up, we're running, doing a, a trial run on Monday to make sure that all the electronics work, it is a, it is closed to the public, each candidate has been given the ability to bring two guests in, so that they have their campaign manager or their financial person, whoever they want to bring in, but I think we're set to go and it ought to be a good forum.
Good, since all three candidates are here, I just want to mention that we won't be here, but it's not because we're not interested in this, we are, we'll be watching, but we don't want any appearance that we're meeting out of the public eye with you guys, like there's some kind of secret, you know, we, we can get in and meet with you and the public can't, so we're, we're not going to be here, but it's not because, we'll be watching, right?
We'll give you a secret handshake after you get elected.
The other thing that I, I, this is a shameless plug that the police chief won't do, so I will, all three of you, whatever happens with the election, you're going to be closing down your campaign accounts at some point, 90 days after the election, within 90 days. The Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club happens to be a 501(c), right? So, if you're looking for something to do with your, that's a great place to keep the money in town, that's a shameless plug. Mr. Stevenson, any other?
I, I just, I will continue to mention about the, the candidate forum, it will be broadcast live on our TV channels, both on Spectrum and Frontier, as well as live on YouTube and then obviously archived on YouTube for a later date, if somebody can't make that meeting, they can access it at a later date.
Vice Mayor Donahue, you had a question?
Yeah, it was brought to my attention today that there's a discount on water rates for citizens over 65, how does a citizen apply for that?
To customer service.
Okay, so they just, I thought, well, gee, I need to bring this, I, I was not aware of it, I, I didn't know and.
We have, we have several discounts, yeah, discounts for senior citizens at the rec center and for sanitation rates.
Yeah, so they just have to call?
They just have to go through customer service, customer service will put their account in that, that mode.
All right, thank you.
Good, city attorneys report?
I have only one thing, but I did want to mention that the very first thing I ever participated in with Temple Terrace was National Night Out.
I think it was your first night.
It was right before I got hired, but I was here that night to observe and the city manager said, suddenly this council ended really early, and the city manager said to me, come on, we're going to go eat pizza, and I said, what? So, I got in his pickup truck and he drove me over to the rec center and there was everybody and the police and everybody was having a great time and eating pizza and all I could think of is, and I didn't know really much about Temple Terrace at all then, and I thought, wow, what a great place, so, that was my first impression of Temple Terrace. The one thing I wanted to mention is that the declaration of state of emergency ordinance is tentatively done, I sent it out to all of you and hoping to get, expecting that it's going to be on the next agenda, but in the meantime, if you could, if you've got any comments or questions, please get them to me as soon as you can, so that we can make alterations to that ordinance if necessary, thank you.
Thank you. Other business to come for the council? Okay, just a real quick comment to the, to the public here, is that, folks, we've got a very good council up here, we, we really do, this is, and, and I know at times I hear in the community, oh, you guys, you know, you speak with one voice and you shouldn't have back and forth and there shouldn't be, but that's what makes a council a good council, right? You don't want five cookie cutter people, so, we're supposed to have the back and forth, right? And unfortunately, if you work at Amazon or Bank of America, we don't have to talk of, you would never hear us talk about our employees, you wouldn't talk about the CEO in public in a public shareholder meeting, but we don't have a choice, right? This is government in the sunshine, so we can't huddle up in the back room to discuss the stuff that's awkward to discuss in public. So, I, I really want the public to understand, we have a good council and there is a heck of a lot of good stuff going on in Temple Terrace. We, we've got buildings going up and the redevelopment area, we've got Amazon going up out on Horny Road, we've got other smaller businesses coming in that people don't even notice, we've got restaurants opening up, we've got a lot of really good stuff going on in Temple Terrace, we got the most beautiful rec center anywhere, we just broke ground on an irrigation project at the golf course, which I know if you're not a golfer, it's hard to get excited about that, but that's a huge deal, that's over a million dollars, that would have never happened, right? So, we've got so much good going on that I don't want people, when they see the council meetings, like, oh, all those guys do is banner back and forth and disagree, well, that's what we're supposed to do, right? We're not enemies, this is a great council, everybody's passionate about the city, this is the way it's supposed to be, so, if, if you live in Temple Terrace, you should be very proud of everything that's going on here, we've got a lot of, of great stuff and, and, so I just want to remind everybody of that, so, we always talk about bad stuff, we got good stuff, right? We are amazing, with that, we are adjourned.